Well, good morning. This is the Knox County Commissioners, Knox County, Ohio, not Tennessee. July fifteenth, two thousand twenty-five, we are kind of beginning to do our regular session agenda. Called the order and so I'm Jason, let's go through the resolutions and at ten thirty, we have some individuals coming from the Ohio EPA to talk about the Clean Water Act two thousand two hundred eight. Plan and give us some information there. So Jason, please.
So Commissioners, the first item you have is the mid-year budget. For the county, beginning of January twenty-one twenty-five and compliance with the Higher Business Code. So this is kind of I view this as more of a cash flow exercise, but excuse me, we have to look at each levy fund as well as the general fund. And we work with the auditor to determine what we estimate revenue to be for twenty twenty-six. The expense side of that is a little bit tricky at this point because we're only halfway through the year. So it really becomes more of a revenue and a cash flow. Budget, but you have those in your packet today and those are for the general fund, the Board of DD, Children's Services, Community Mental Health Levy, the Senior Citizens Levy and the Park District. As well as the back is a schedule of indebtedness and this is just list out all the bonds that the county holds. And what the interest rates are on those, what the outstanding amount of those bonds are and what we'll pay on those bonds in twenty twenty-six. And so this is ready for your approval. It's required to be the order by July twenty-first. And I think I mentioned you, normally we do this probably late June, but with the state budget and the way all of the talk of tax revenue and all that, we had to hold off until that was kind of resolved. And then Robin and I met with Sarah, worked through the revenue numbers, the departments provide revenue to Sarah, each of those departments, the only one we're really involved in is the general fund. And those are ready. And the only item that was kind of, I would say stuck down as a potential for concern was Children's Services with some of the reductions that they are estimating to see in twenty twenty-six. But it does show that their revenue potentially will try to get you a good number, will decrease by around nine hundred thousand dollars between eight and nine hundred thousand dollar reduction to revenue in twenty twenty-six. So based on that, they would be required to use cash carryover that's on hand to cover that. And if that does come to be actual, then their ending cash balance would be down below two hundred thousand to end twenty twenty-six, which would be a little alarming at this point. But again, this was a budget based on what they're estimating revenues will be in twenty twenty-six and it's obviously only July of twenty twenty-five. So we'll know better as we get farther into this year. But this is ready for your adoption and then Penny will do the resolution and we'll submit it to the Auditor's Office by the deadline.
Jason, real quick, the Board of DD.
Yes.
Four million dollar decrease in any cash balance. Yeah, went from twelve million nine to estimated twenty-six to eight million seven.
That's just their ending.
That's two thousand twenty-three.
Right.
But I'm saying, yeah, that's their ending cash. If you go, so that's if you go up to the twenty-six, which is the last column, what they're estimating is revenue will come in at six point four, almost six point five.
Right.
Their expenditures would be seven point nine and they would use one point four million of their carryover. And that would drop their cash on hand from ten million to eight million, is what that says. Their, their cash balance is always a little higher than any other group and part of that is the way they have timing of their
levy.
The way, well, the way they have to, they pay upfront and then they bill for those Medicare Medicaid services back or Medicaid services back. So some of that's timings.
Right.
They have to.
How they receive.
Yeah, exactly.
Thank you.
And then over the last couple of years anyway, with DD, they, they have taken on some of the job and paying services, children's, some of the kids that could qualify under both programs and they've taken, I know one year was like three hundred thousand dollars worth from that. So they've been able to reduce some of that burden on the Child Services Fund. I think we've been sounding that alarm for these five years now that 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 fund is one of the children's, I've been struggling.
Yeah, and I guess the only other item I would throw up, just so we are aware, again, this is obviously an estimate at this point, but the senior levy this year that we're currently on, it projected one point one million one hundred sixty-three thousand. Next year, the projection is one million one eighty-five. So they're projecting it gives up about twenty-two thousand dollars in funding. So that would be the case, we would also be able to award a little additional senior levy funds in twenty twenty-six if that works out. But other than that, it's ready for your adoption.
I motion to approve that.
I second it.
Those favor say aye.
And I think Commissioner Personal just needs to sign one item on the front and then you take care of the rest. All right, we have approved a contract agreement with the Knox County Convention and Business Bureau. This is a renewal of the contract between the county and the CDB as it relates to bed tax and those things. And there's no change, hopefully through the contract other than the dates.
I may have motion to approve that.
Second.
Yes, in favor, say aye.
That requires all three signatures. And then we have approved the certification and collection of delinquent water wastewater accounts. This is from the Knox County Water and Wastewater Office. These are delinquent accounts and the we're allowed to, but these then on the property tax for payment. And so Jeff has certified these and then I'll submit to the Auditor's Office. Once you approve.
Motion to approve.
Second.
And those in favor say aye. And I notice there were thirty-five names on this list, so. We just, yeah.
Yeah, the total's ten thousand seven hundred three dollars and seventy cents. Then we have the approved establishment of an animal care fund. And so this has been something Brian Biggest staff was all worn is asked about and I've been working with him for a couple of months. This really has come about, we have individuals in the community that would like to make a donation to directly to animal care. Right now, we have no mechanism to do that. It has to come into the dog kennel fund and kind of gets lumped in through donations. He feels that this would be better for the community if they want to make a donation for direct animal care. That this would allow, this fund would be a separate fund, the money would go in and it could only be used for direct animal care. It feels like that would help with donations if the public knows that it's directly going to that. It's not going to operations or any equipment or anything like that. So the process of this is that you pass a resolution asking for the fund. This doesn't mean we'll get it. The auditor will then certify this request and they'll send it to the state. And if the state has up to thirty or sixty days to respond, if they don't respond, then we can establish the fund. So I think it will probably be okay, but it's not a guarantee, but this is us starting the process to ask for that.
And it's not a commitment to fund it, it's just to establish it as something the public can do.
Right. And if they want to make a donation, then they would go directly to this fund.
I motion to approve that.
Second.
Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Then we have a letter of authorization permitting the Ohio, Heart of Ohio Trail Board to conduct conversations on behalf of the Board of Commissioners regarding to the planned Centerburg Midway Welcome Station. This is so long in the making that the letter that was signed by the prior Commissioners, they didn't want the letter anymore because they're not Commissioners, so they wanted to get your authorization for her to reach out and whether this Cheryl's laughing, but whether this welcome station ever happens, we don't know, but it's been worked on for at least a couple of years, right? So this letter just is again, letting them have those conversations on your behalf on, as it relates to the Centerburg Midway Welcome Station, because it's, it's you own the property, it's your trail.
I should check proof.
Second. Those in favor say aye.
I require all of their signatures. Then we have approval legal notice, invitation to bid the Knox County Sheriff's Office Maintenance Building Project. This is ready to go out to bid. The estimated cost is four hundred twenty-five thousand dollars and this is so it relates to modifying the existing structure for evidence secured, obviously providing security to that. And then also we're, we've got to get power back there from Sheriff's Office back to this building. So this is ready to go out to bid. And with your approval, Penny will get it on our website and on our, Andrew will get it on Facebook page.
Are we doing that whole building or just a partial of that building?
We're doing the whole building, but it's going to be about a little over a half, maybe, I don't know if I call it two-thirds, but close of the building will be secured.
Right.
And we'll have climate control. The other, call it third, will stay as it is, but we're going to secure it better, but that'll be more for just
dry storage.
Non-evidence, it'll be just for pieces of equipment, things like that, that the sheriff wants to store. And then this is also now providing some power. We have a maintenance facility, a maintenance storage right beside there and doesn't have power. So when we run the power to the evidence area, we're going to go ahead and provide power to our job shop as well.
I motion to approve that.
Second.
Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And then we have another approval legal notice invitation for bid. Worked with the Sheriff and Chief Deputy Miller. There's some upgrades that needs need done to the jail security system. And this requires to be bid, the cost is probably estimated around one hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So it does require a bid. This is ready to go and we'll advertise this at the same time. And I think we're going to open these on the same, same day.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Those in favor say aye.
General security. Then we have the Sheriff's Meal Report for June, a dollar eighty-seven per meal, seven thousand six hundred and seventy-six meals. And I think, you know, we've always done a resolution for this, but as I was talking to Penny, I think we just need to enter it into the record. It'll be a fire's a resolution. So just we're in receipt of that. Got to let you know that. Utility permit, lead corps group on behalf of Bright Speed, and this is going to be on Howard Danville Road to four oh three High Street in Danville and Union Patch Road.
A question, motion to approve.
Second.
Those in favor say aye.
And then we have a couple sets of minutes, then you've got bills and one transcript to sign for today, please.
And so we'll sign those bills and I see our gas for here. So we'll, yeah, they get them started early.
You can, the goods posted, please.
On interview, it's a solution. Definitely you want.
Make sure as long as you're signing those, I'll just give you a quick update on what I have and then we're going to have to do it afterwards. The back entrance project is continuing to go well. This week they're sprinkler systems in. They're doing electrical and the brick has, the brick face has been delivered. So that's probably getting going this week too. So everything seems to be going well there. The Sheriff's Office, the parking lot, this is complete. We've resealed that, the lane all the way down to the Sheriff's Office as well as the parking lot. So resealed, restripped and fully open and back in operation. The sheriff told today, I wanted to pass along this, thanks for getting that done. And then the memorial building started today on the back of the building, we're sandblasting and painting those fire escapes that are on the building. Those were, the paint wasn't really peeling lately. So they're kind of looking to make sure all those are safe, metals in good shape. And then they'll be sand blasted and then painted. So that'll take a couple of weeks probably to do that project. You know, kind of come around the side of the building, there's a couple small ones to deal. And that's all ongoing, so that that should get done as well. So I think that's it from the Capitol. Okay, perspectives, I think those are all on on schedule to get done.
Jason, enlighten me on the Thera grinding, fifty-one thousand, we get thirty of that back, correct? And is this a biannual or one time?
That was, so we budgeted sixty thousand a year.
Okay.
But that is a catch-up and a cleanup from the prior contractor being done and leaving. If you remember, we got that quote, it was like the prior contractor wanted around ninety thousand to do that and we said, no, we're not doing that. So this was the new company that came in and it was fifty-one thousand. And then thirty of that will be reimbursed from DK now.
So it is one time.
Yeah. Yeah, we could have another grinding late this year. But if we did, it should not be that size. We're hopefully getting into the twelve. Yeah.
As you was a helping the little ladies back in the pool. Come on in.
Hey, good morning.
Morning, morning, Morrison here.
Yeah, yes, we see the three priority seeds. You're doing well.
Well, it depends on what you're going to tell us.
Nothing that, got some handouts. Just some general information that we wanted to go with the focus file.
Go ahead and sit down, guys. Lady. And, and we are live, so we want you to watch your language.
Absolutely.
If you're in the country now.
You gotta watch this one a little bit. No, just in.
So once we pass these around, we'll ask that you say your name, indicate to us who you're with, so that the people who are watching.
Yeah.
And then we'll watch later on, on the timeframe, know who's speaking to us.
Sounds right.
Because I have down that Sam Smith, are you Sam?
I'm Sam.
And I'm Mark Johnson and Ashley with us from, from the Ohio EPA.
Correct.
Okay, so we will turn it, turn it over to you. I assume you're the one that's going to lead this and so you had the paperwork in your hands and.
Yeah, absolutely.
So let, let me interject here. I was the one who requested through best layer that you guys come to that.
Sounds good.
And the reason for that, there has been a lot of rumors floating around about two oh eight and how bad it's going to be for some of the landowners and things like that. So I wanted to either give a check in a box or dispel those rumors, one of the two.
Definitely. That's what we're here to do. And our, our thought would be, we can kind of just broadly go through what two oh eight planning is. Kind of what we've been doing in central Ohio and then how it applies to the Knox County. And you know, really it is just this, this information here is a general overview, very, very casual conversation about the process. And I really want to emphasize, it's a local driven process. So it's really up to the county commissioners and the local municipalities to take two oh eight planning wherever you see fit. And we're here to help along that process. We're not here to push you in any direction by any means. So maybe we could just kind of run through some of the slides, go over just an overview of two oh eight planning and then jump in with any questions that you have anytime, very casual, if that's all right. And maybe we can explain our roles a little bit. So I'm Mark Johnson. I'm the Assistant Director at Ohio EPA. Oversee our regulatory programs at the agency, including the Division of Surface Water that handles dual with planning, which is essentially sewer, sewer systems. Turn it over to Ashley.
Yeah, I'm Ashley Ward. I'm an Assistant Chief with the Division of Surface Water and I'm over most of our permitting programs, including the two oh eight program.
I'm Sam Smith. I'm our legislative liaison. So I work with the state legislature. So Rep. Lee called me. So set this up, one of the fifth information out.
Do you have our contact information there? So any further requests, you can certainly call. So a little bit about two oh eight. So when we say two oh eight, that just refers to the Clean Water Act at the federal level. Ohio EPA is a fully delegated state, so the federal government sets the standards. We implement them here in Ohio, nothing more stringent. So everything related to two oh eight planning is set in the Clean Water Act and it's our delegated authority to help communities through the two oh eight process. And there's all these buzz terms in there. Again, it's basically where sewer lines run in a given geographic area. So you can see that next slide, it kind of shows area-wise. And there's area wides throughout the state. The entire state is not managed by an area wide. Some, some places are, some places aren't. You know, to central Ohio, including Knox County, we do not have a formal planning agency that does two oh eight planning. So it defaults to Ohio EPA. There's been some rumors and scuttlebutt about Morpsy. If you guys are familiar with Morpsy becoming a formal area wide in parts of central Ohio. Our previous director, Anne Vogel, who's no longer with us, kind of set Morpsy on that path to explore being a, a area wide, a formal area wide, but they are not there yet. So right now it defaults to Ohio EPA. And Morpsy, if they were to become a formal area wide, would just basically act on our behalf, working with the local communities to help plan and, and you know, look into the future for sewer planning strategies. So the core principles of a two oh eight plan, so centralized wastewater collection. So if you live in a municipal area or an area that's served by a regional wastewater system, every time you flush the toilet, it goes to a regional collection system. You pay a bill every month, pretty basic, you know, sewer planning. A lot of growth and development in central Ohio, you know, a lot, it's important to a lot of companies to have a centralized sewer system, important for residents, important for citizens. You know, their, their other option in rural areas like where I live, I live out in Harlem Township in Delaware County, you know, I have a home septic system, so I handle it all on my own property. Pros and cons to both. Home septic system, certainly when they're maintained properly, it's a good thing. When they're not, they cause a lot of environmental issues. So more of a regionalization, centralized sewer system approach is something that we help communities plan for. Two oh eight plan benefits, again, as I had mentioned, locally driven. So the way it currently works in Knox County, you guys have an existing two oh eight plan. And if you have a municipal boundary like Mount Vernon, they own and control their sewer system. If it's an unincorporated area like a township that does not have a centralized system, it defaults to the county commissioners to decide what you guys want to do in those areas. So I'll use Delaware County as an example. The county commissioners in Delaware County have designated the county engineer's office as the regional sewer provider. So in unincorporated areas in Delaware County, they have regional sewer lines that extend out into the townships. And it's funneled through the county and you get a bill from the county for your sewer system. Now they still have septic systems throughout the area. But in general, the county has the first rights to those unincorporated areas to serve them. So Delaware County has been expanding their sewer lines throughout the county for the past twenty years, thirty years, not sure how long, but they, they definitely have branched out quite a bit.
I was going to say, actually probably back in the seventies, but now it's over in the high west since.
Yeah, okay. Absolutely. So you know, the, the benefits of a two oh eight plan, it, it's essentially just planning for your community, planning for growth in your county. Proactively planning. So when development occurs or you run into like septic system issues and things like that, you have options available to the residents and to the businesses to, to have centralized sewer system.
So you're not forcing the issue or any of this, correct?
Correct.
So this is more like a, for lack of better terms, a sewage comprehensive plan.
That, that is absolutely right. Yep, correct. And it's really up to you guys what you want in that comprehensive plan. Certainly we've been pretty proactive in like Lincoln County and Delaware Counties because of all the growth and development. Like we started spearheading a lot of those conversations because some of the two oh eight plans in those counties were two thousand six, two thousand five, tenth timeframe. And with the trajectory of the growth, they weren't planning for the next five, ten, fifteen years of how much growth and development would be there. So we started a lot of those conversations and that certainly started bringing like the whole two oh eight conversation to light and folks were getting worried like, oh, here comes this bureaucratic EPA coming in to force us to do things. And that is not where we're at at all. We, we are not here to force you guys to do anything. Just more education of what a two oh eight. Again, there's a lot of benefits to two oh eight planning. Our ultimate goal of two oh eight planning is, you know, to make sure those centralized sewer systems are available to people when they need them and that it avoids overlap areas. So like municipality X running a sewer line on one side of the street and municipality Y running a sewer line on the other side of the street, you know, utilizing our resources and local dollars to, to be smart planning and make sure those, those utilities are there and managed appropriately. That's really the ultimate goal of a two oh eight. So implementation, so why is it important to Ohio EPA? So in a two oh eight plan, that basically guides us to where we can issue permits. So let's say Mount Vernon wanted to run a sewer line in the middle of a township. And if, if that isn't approved in a two oh eight plan and through the commissioners, we can approve that permit to happen. So there's some safety guards in there. So that really is a roadmap for us. The two oh eight plan is a roadmap for Ohio EPA and for municipalities to apply for permits and run those sewer lines in those designated areas within a two oh eight plan. So they can't go outside those boundaries without commissioner approval, local municipal approval and, and things like that. Anything you want to add to that?
No, you got it.
Okay.
Oh, would that impact the township itself and its ability to, if they don't want those sewer lines run from the municipality, say Mount Vernon City, they don't want it ran to their area for development or put neighborhoods or track housing developers. How does that impact the local township and their jurisdiction and authority?
Great question. So as you know, townships don't have a, a ton of authority in this space outside of local zoning. So what we would ask for, like in that scenario, the municipality kind of has two options. They could annex in parts of the township. And in two oh eight world, annexation is kind of the king and queen. So if a municipality annex is in a given area, they have the right to serve that area by sewer.
But they also have an ORCU obligation to do so.
That is correct.
Right.
Yep, an obligation. That is correct.
Like forces them to get water and sewer if the municipality runs the water and sewer to that township.
That is correct.
And the township can't stop that.
That is correct.
Well, I, I will just add, they don't have to annex to provide sewer. So if all the locals agree, then they can do that without annexing the property.
And I was going to mention that. So what we've seen a lot recently is in Delaware County and Lincoln County, for example, I'll, I'll go back to those lots. We've been neck deep with those folks. We've seen a lot of agreements with townships and municipalities. Unlike a Unlike a service agreement. And you know, they come to agreement and they can serve. Water and sewer in those designated areas without annexation. So we've seen a lot of folks going in that direction.
And that would be quintessential.
Yeah. And again, it's all up to the locals. Like we, we can't force annexation. A two oh eight plan does not force annexation. That's a local decision, local, local authority. Um. But we help provide options of like these agreements versus annexation. So folks don't have to annex in if they don't want to.
Think in townships actually put something in their zoning that keeps this from happening.
They definitely can.
So they can keep a municipality from coming into their area and taking the water and sewer.
Correct.
Rights there.
Yep. And there's a lot of zoning options and, and local zoning code that. Um, you know, we can certainly help. I'm not a zoning expert, but we can certainly help with some folks at the agency that have worked a lot in this space. Um, and we've been pushing that with a lot of the townships, like take a look at your zoning, your comprehensive plans and make sure you have safeguards in place to avoid. Identity housing, if that's not what you want, or big box warehouses, that kind of thing. They have the local authority to do that.
The two oh eight four that are unzoned.
Sure.
So they have no, no ability to control that at all, right? If they're unzoned.
Absolutely. They would, um, that scenario, so they could certainly, they're vulnerable to annexation. Um, as county commissioners, if you guys wanted that area to be served by like a county brand system. They wouldn't have a lot of options and, and developers could come in with no zoning restrictions and potentially do a lot of different things that.
And I think that's the concern with the townships is they don't want a developer to be able to just come in.
Yeah.
Use Mount Vernon City water, uh, bring it into their area and put, you know, track housing or change the rural landscape, something like that without. Them having any say in that. So if they want to have a say in it, uh, people think that our comprehensive plan covers that. It does not. This from happening. So if they, if townships are concerned, they do need to put something in their zoning and you actually helped them to do that.
No, we help, um, we'll certainly sit down with townships and, and maybe. Point them to other townships in the given area that have done really well with zoning and comprehensive plans. But we don't like write zoning plans and all that stuff. We just try to help educate the process.
And at the end of the day, everybody wants the money for the water. That's the bottom line.
That's exactly right.
The two oh eight plan is separate from the zoning. So it doesn't really, it ju- it's just about the sewers and the conservative areas. So it doesn't dictate zoning. It doesn't even really look at zoning that much.
Yeah.
One of the problems, kind of, that, that you're talking about is. You have, that's a very slippery slope because if you start. Unless you have zoning that. Reflects how many houses can go on a certain area in those townships. If you don't have some type of safe water sewer protection, you're gonna end up with a lot of. Uh, wells and septic tanks in the area instead of organized water sewer, which could be a problem in the long run at some point. So. Yep. Kind of, I think have to find the equal median there of how that works.
Yeah, absolutely.
And putting in their zoning, what they do and don't want. That's how they can.
That's why they're. Why the comprehensive plan should lay out where they want the housing stuff.
And our plan doesn't do that. So that's just to be clear. Our comprehensive plan does not protect township. So if they don't want tract housing, they don't want. Big development coming in and using Mount Vernon water to do it, they need to visit that.
For sure. Most definitely.
And Ohio EPA is really taking the strong stance that zoning and development, that's a local, local decision. So we don't.
There are many townships that are know their, what they need to do. That's as commissioners is trying to help them understand.
Yeah.
What we do and what things they have to do to protect their townships. If they don't want, as we all know, growth is coming. And it's coming fast and it's at the door. So if they don't want. The EPA and municipalities to make those decisions for them, they have to make those decisions.
Which definitely.
Get it in their zoning.
For townships, the comprehensive plans and the zoning are their best tools.
Yep. And that's why we've been encouraging townships to take a look at their comprehensive plans. If they don't have one, develop one and. You know, trying to encourage collaboration at a local level. So talk to your local municipality and. See if there's some room for agreement where you don't get annexed in, but you can still have centralized water and sewer and. You know, have those amenities in place.
Well, the comprehensive plan lays out where, and if they look at it, where. Housing development should be shagmented industrial. So we've done our part with the comprehensive plan. Now it's. The test trustee's job to implement that and make their zoning regulations that apply. So sure. We've done our part. Now the, the trustees have to step up and, and their part so and protect themselves.
Yep, most definitely. So ju- just kind of two oh eight, back to the, the presentation a little bit. So again, Ohio EPA has the authority to. To approve these two oh eight plans process wise. So for Knox County, for example, you guys have an existing two oh eight plan. If you guys were interested in updating that, we can certainly partner with you guys and sit down and start working through any updates. If there's no need to update the plan right now, we don't have to do that. Um, you know, ultimately it's up to the commissioners and. And municipalities in Knox County to decide if you guys want to update the two oh eight plan. The plan for the future, you know, there's no timeline from the agency to do that. We try to revisit, you know, certainly the big growth areas every five years. Because it changes so fast, especially in central Ohio. You know, we just want to be a resource for the county and help you guys plan for the future. Um, talks a little bit more about townships, you know, obviously townships can't be a management agency. We talked about a management agency, that, that's the entity that would help plan for a sewer area geographically. So whether it's. On Vernon, whether it's a county commissioner designated entity, you know, that kind of management agency, they're just basically the ones that plan for. Sewer lines where they run. Uh, but townships can't do that. And that often upsets townships as we found very quickly in some of these conversations.
On flick over in Delaware County and Dickin County, right?
That is a fact, absolutely.
What is the major concerns that they have?
Um, annexation. That, that was one of the biggest things that they just don't have the ability to stop annexation. And they felt that with these two oh eight. Update plans, it would force annexation.
And when they annex, those dollars go out.
That's correct.
That township.
It's exactly.
Which pretty much dissolves the township over time.
You betcha. That's exactly.
And that's the real.
That is the real.
The bottom line.
Yep, for sure. That's what we have found, but. And then this last slide here just kind of shows an example of like a facility planning area. That's Delaware County. Um. The, the outside red line is, is the county limits, but then you can. And we have this electronically, so it's a little small on the slide. We can send that to you. But it just basically shows these facility planning areas. So for example, right in the center, they're Delaware. City. That red line that surrounds Delaware City, they're looking at that as their planning area where they will eventually extend water and sewer lines. Out into that, that red boxed area. So it, it allows them to plan for the future. Use, use their dollars at a local level smartly, um, and partner with those townships to get centralized water and sewer in the area. And that's the ultimate goal. Of a two oh eight plan.
So I'm not real versed, maybe those who are adjacent more than me, but, um, an example, Mount. I'm a. Investor and I buy land just outside the corporations of Mount Vernon, the city of Mount Vernon. And I want to put development in. The city can come to me and offer me tax abatements and or tax. Uh, savings or some issued ways to help build the structure there if I annex to them. So if that happens. Who's the rule of law? Is it the township or the city or the landowner that has that privilege to make that decision?
Good question. So when it comes to annexations, so in that example, if the, the landowner and the municipality agree to annex in.
It's all over.
It's all over.
So that is the rule of the land. It's the municipality and the landowner make the decision.
That's correct.
So at the end of the day, if you look at Knox County, a lot of the. Housing that we're talking about. All comes down to this, the local municipality. Offering the tax relief for the subsidies to help build that project. As long as they annex into the city.
Correct.
So if that happens, anything in the outlying area, no matter what the zoning rule may be, is out the door. Is that correct?
Yeah, as long as the landowners and the municipality agree that annexation is very strong. It's gotta be. An adjacent.
Yeah, but that's why I'm saying adjacent right now, so.
But it's also attractive to the developer because yes, there's lots become more, he can do higher density. It's more attractive. There's a lot of people that don't want subjects and.
Well, yeah, that's why I'm saying, at the end of the day, the annexation. Comes down to the municipality and the landowner. So no matter how, how steep your zoning rule is in township, you're out.
Then the city is responsible for the zoning.
Yeah, but part, part of what the ORC though, that's where you talk about when annexation one, annexation two.
Yep.
If the township can show that it had adversary, um, financial recourse on them, they can then. Do the differing about what the annexation is, so it'd be probably forced to be an annexation two. So the township wouldn't lose revenue.
Revenue.
From the add to that being an annexation one.
Yep.
Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. And that's like, and go back to Delaware County. That was one of the reasons our understanding why the commissioners had. Designated like the engineering office to, to run regional sewer systems and water in the area to stop annexation. So a lot of those townships are served by a county system. They can maintain a county system, still have centralized water and sewer, but. There's not a lot of incentive to annex in because they already have, you know, centralized services. So that would be one of the goals of.
And the difficult part is you're responsible for all the unincorporated areas of the county.
Right, yeah, I got you.
The issue would come in, which we upgraded our. Plant, we call it PVA, but it was an old lagoon system.
Yep.
And we just upgraded that with ARPA money this year or last year. But that was a two point two million dollar upgrade. There's thirty five customers. I mean, if, if you had to do that on your own, the debt. Structure back to the homeowner is, that's financial on that. So. Um, that's where it gets difficult from the county's perspective. And if you can take it to a municipality, well, that's. Lot more cost effective.
Yep.
And so that's where you get into, we've got to look at that at the county level is how close is it to a municipality? To take it back.
Yep, sure, absolutely.
So they, in Delaware, like they did regional. To stop annexation, is that pretty much so?
Yeah, regional systems to, one, help prevent annexation, certainly Delaware County and Lincoln County. It was more of a. Growth and development approach to where they can get sewer and water. Um, out into those rural areas for future development and, and plan for the future.
Interesting.
We see that quite a bit throughout the, throughout the state where there's these county designated water and sewer systems to. To run those pipes out into the expanse areas and the unincorporated areas. We say, see that quite a bit.
Where's the health department fit into this whole scenario? Cause I know, I think it was, um, maybe eight years ago. Um, they were talking about, um, EPA coming in and, and that, and having certified. Uh, septic evaluations and that have to be done, I think every ten years. Um, and that, um. The, the state was supposedly forcing every, um, septic owner to have that done, I think every three years. Um, and so there was a concern about the, from our health department. That they go out and they find a septic that's, has issues. And the people not being able to finance that, whether there's any revenue that, uh, the EPA would help on. Those type of scenarios, is there an avenue where there's great money from the EPA? For those households that have a, a failing septic system that's out in the county, um, that's far away from any, uh. Access to any municipality.
Great question. So, um, I'll take a step back at the agency. So we have what's called a state revolving loan fund program. We issue about a billion dollars of low interest, zero percent interest loans for regional planning, regional sewer, regional water systems. We have a pretty robust SRF program, state revolving loan fund. Part of the interest that comes back on those repayments, we've set aside money for home septic system replacements. And we work with the health departments to give local monies for home septic system replacements. So we'll give a grant to the local health department and they'll work with homeowners where they know there's failing septic systems and it help. Offset the cost of, uh, septic system replacement.
So probably an income based loan.
Correct. Yeah, that's how a lot of the health departments have done it. So they have like a tiered value. So if you're under this threshold, you get full replacement. Next up, seventy five percent of that kind of thing. So, so short answer is yes, we do have some options. Um, certainly with Governor Dewine and his H two Ohio program. We've had a lot of infrastructure money that we've done a lot of home septic system replacements with, and those have been free dollars to the taxpayers. So it's, it's. You know, free money essentially. Um, but obviously we took a big haircut on that through our last budget process. So we don't have as much money to.
Nothing's free.
Absolutely.
Get taxed for it.
You betcha, hundred percent. That's exactly right. Good point.
Do you know when the last time that two oh eight for Knox County was done? I mean, I've been here for a little over a few years. I don't, this isn't a topic that.
I can try to find out.
We talked about.
So we did a big plan update in two thousand and six and we haven't updated Knox and then I don't know how much work was done. I took a look at. The county two oh eight plan before we got here and it's, um, pretty big. So in some counties and areas, we have boundaries. Um, like the example here, you see the red line around Delaware. So they work with the county and they negotiate, you know, the city is going to provide sewers and plants for this area and the county is going to take everything else. Um, Knox County doesn't have that. So it's just the annexation.
So we need our own two oh eight comprehensive plan.
You ha- you have a two oh eight plan. It's just very general and not as descriptive as like what you're seeing here.
Does the two oh eight also come, uh, cover water, safe water treatments, just wastewater?
Just the wastewater. Typically, we will see, um. Where the wastewater lines are ran, they'll follow with the water lines, that same entity. But there's nothing in like the drinking, the safe drinking water act that has like a two oh eight process. It's just sewer.
Yeah. And I know when the, the city did a, a recent upgrade on what we call our Fairgrounds Road. And there was a lot of discussion about if a sewer line comes across my property. And I'm not part of the, the city already, um, that there would be a requirement that I have to hook on.
Sure.
Can you talk about that a little bit? Cause one of the things that we said is, is if the people on Fairgrounds Road had. Goods, um, septic, septic system, they were not going to be required to hook up. So can you talk about the ORC regulations? For that and how's that defines?
Yeah.
Um, when you can, if it can, must.
Want to go first?
Go ahead.
All right. So, um, good rule of thumb. So we, we typically don't force people to connect in. Now, there's some case law and some lawsuits over the years where the rule of thumb for us is three hundred foot. So if three, if you're within. Three hundred feet of existing sewers, we technically have the authority to force a connection. Now, we typically don't do that. We don't force it. A lot of health departments across the state are a little more proactive on this. And have forced those connections with a failing septic system. If it's within three hundred feet at a local level, they force people in. We try not to do that. Now, we have pulled that authority. If we have company X that has a lot of issues. We've been able to force a connection in, but we try not to do that.
Or if there's like a failing subdivision that has a bunch of failing systems and the creek is gross, then.
Then maybe we've taken an enforcement action and forced a connection. Very rarely.
I can say, I, as far as I know, no one had to.
No.
Because I think the health department did not.
Or, yeah, they did. Health department did not force it. Now, I think if their septic fails. Then they have to hook up because the lines or the taps are already in the property. But yeah, they, they did not force that.
You just put one in and it's running well, it's not like they are going to be forced to connect.
Right. Yeah, because at a local level, like with home septic systems, like there's a flow, um, threshold. So if it's below a. Certain amount of flow per year, like a residential home, that defaults to the health department. If it's a. A little larger business that has a more flow in their own septic system, it defaults to us. So there's like a threshold there. So usually homeowners and home septic systems. Will default to the health.
Yeah. So we, I guess we define that as, um, residential, I suppose, a commercial.
Exactly, right. Yep. For sure.
No, thank you for coming, by the way. There was a lot of stuff in the wind blowing around about two oh eight.
Sure.
And I thought rather than. Me trying to do the investment, I would have you guys before me.
Well, we're transparent. We want to be here to be helpful with government. We don't want to force anything, but if you guys are interested in. Having more dialogue on two oh eight plan, let us know. We can certainly be a resource and help, you know, bring some examples of two oh eight plans. Um, you know, we just encourage folks to talk about it locally. We know development's coming in some capacity in the future. Growth and development, and we just want to help you, help the communities plan and be set up for success. So.
If, if an individual wanted to read the two oh eight plan that's here in Knox County, where do they find it? If if an individual wanted to read the two oh eight plan that's here in Knox County, where do they find it?
Yes, so it's on our website if you. If you, and I can send you links.
Yeah.
That might be the easiest way.
Find it, I couldn't find it.
Our website's terrible. We're working on fixing it up.
Okay, you bring up a good point when you say that. The reputation of bureaucracy.
Yep.
Federal government, EPA, and even I have a local example where it's been uh a long process to get something approved. That is an issue and.
It, we've, so I've, I've been with the agency since two thousand and twelve. I've been trying to break down those barriers and be a better transparent government. Um, I'll say like, yeah, my, that's my cell phone. So if there's issues with an approval or some issue with EPA, please call me. Cell phone good to be twenty four seven. I will help find a solution for that. We've been certainly looking at ways to maybe reduce red tape, reduce regulations. We don't have a good name just because it says EPA in there. We often get associated with the federal government. I promise you, we're really good to do business with.
Well, you're you're nice people.
Yeah.
You know, that that perception.
Yeah.
And and there is a a case, I guess, for local government.
Sure.
Local schools and local, the local people have more control over what they have.
Yep.
It needs more their uh criteria of what they want in that community.
Absolutely.
Further it gets away and the federal government, not not that we can't collaborate at times, but the further it gets away from the local people, oftentimes the bureaucracy becomes right, you know, we all heard the red tape and all those things. It can become a nightmare for people. And so just townships are concerned because they've seen what's going on in Delaware.
Sure.
They've seen what's going on with Licking. There have been encroachment and and the township gets swallowed up and then it becomes what they weren't anticipating their local township becoming. So trying to find that balance.
Legislation liaison.
Mm-hmm.
Are you a lobbyist?
I mean, no, yeah, I mean. But I mean, I I do, I do have favor. Agency to the legislature.
Okay.
Yeah.
I just thought, I thought it was a nice word for lobbyists, but.
Technically, you can lobby on the.
Registered jailing.
But then I don't know if you guys know Tony Gold.
Sure do.
But I guess he's gonna be working with Jim Tressel.
Yes, yeah. Yeah, I know. He was good for us when our previous director brought him over. He he helped us out a lot doing a lot of events coordination and all kinds of stuff. So happy for him to have that.
Yes.
So.
Very informative, guys. Thank you.
Yeah, any question.
You can get that link from you. So we're not asking to update the plan. You're not asking to update the plan. This is information.
That's correct.
It helps our townships know what's going on in other places so we can plan.
That's exactly right. Yep, most definitely. We're here to help any way we can.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Appreciate your time.
So you know Tony then?
Now, we have another Knox County native that works for us too. Her name's Katie Boyer. That's her married name, but she grew up, she knew Tony well. Um, she's like our comms communications director at the agency too, but can't recall her maiden name, but she's from this county.
First name's Katie.
Katie. Tony will know her. Well, thank you. Appreciate it greatly. Yeah, definitely. Enjoy the weather.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So Jason, you gave us. Do you have anything you need to share?
No, just working.
And then Barry, you're going to the fair board meeting tomorrow night?
I am.
And you're going to uh uh come back with a bunch of information about the Knox County Fair.
And some coupons for food maybe.
And I understand we have a fire uh over in Centerburg. They're doing a pull-in of the truck.
Yeah, the center, yeah, central.
Central Ohio.
C O F, yeah.
J F D.
Yeah. We're doing the engine push-in ceremony at six forty five tomorrow.
Works and nobody has to pull it in, right?
Yeah, yeah. So if there's no other business.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
We stand adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.